All right, I have six thirty. I'm going to call to order the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Alderman meeting. Local please.
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
Alderman Wilkins, Alderman Deckard, Alderman Rogers.
Present.
Alderman Magley.
We have four. Well, if everybody do want any pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
That moves us into special presentations, item four. First up, we have Representative Sharice Tolson Rice to address us with some things.
As you all know, I talk very loud. Is this on? I'm not sure.
On.
Okay. So I may not even need a microphone. I am your all-state representative in my seventh year due to Missouri term limits. At the end of twenty twenty-four, I will be term limited out, and I like to come to every school board and city council meeting normally in June, but when you all had me on the agenda in June, my youngest son was in the hospital, and I needed to be there for him, so I kindly asked to push me back to July. Every year, I like to present you all with some free American and state flags, but you don't have to wait for my yearly visit. I can bring you more free flags throughout the year. I know Centroya schools, they like three, four, five, however many they can get their hands on because they have a lot of campuses. Part of the things I want to tell you about briefly is we passed in May a fifty-five billion-dollar budget, the largest ever. A lot of this is due to COVID and ARPA funds, and just state revenues in general are up. The governor did recently veto some line items. We'll be going into veto session in September, and it may not affect only Centroya, but all of Boone County. I will be fighting to put some more money back in for the Boone County Sheriff's Department for a training center. We'd asked for six hundred thousand. The governor took some of that money out. I'm going to fight to put it back in. Also, we gave extra money to Missouri Task Force One. I was able to pass a bill to help Missouri Task Force One, but funding-wise, the governor also cut some of those monies, and I'll be fighting to put that back in. It's good not just for Boone County, Missouri, but the entire United States. Couple of things. If you all ever need like support letters for grants, any constituents have problems or issues, I'm a problem solver between the citizens and the state and Missouri government. I have liaisons to every department, and so instead of being on hold with Department Revenue number fifty in line, just call me, and we can get it resolved within twenty-four hours. One of the things I do, I've been the official ambassador for Missouri unclaimed property in the past. I've gotten money for the Centroya Library and the Centroya Fire Department, and so this morning I ran all of your names through, and the city of Centroya has over fifty, and when it says over fifty, you never know. And so Marilyn, just to tell you, when I was city clerk in Hallsville, and it was like really hard to get the money for Hallsville, here's all you got to do, and I'm going to leave this sheet up here. Call them, have them mail you the claim form, and all you need is the mayor on city letterhead to say your city collector is authorized to accept the money on behalf of the city of Centroya. It's that simple. You have any problems, call me, and I will get you your check. I ran everybody around the table, and I know Earl Bennett's not here. I've been working with Earl Bennett, gosh, the last several years during COVID on the rec center. It's not a daycare center. It's an after-school program, and we've had quite a few issues with that. I also have the Centroya First Aid Guard I've been after for a long time, and I knew I'd see James. James, just please have Marcelle call me. She has my cellphone number, and I will walk her step by step to get the guard their money. And after I leave here, I'm spending my money in Centroya at Sonic, and Sonic in Centroya has over fifty dollars. So just to quickly, Chris Cox, David Wilkins, Robert Hudson, and Don Rogers, there is too many of your names out on unclaimed property, and so if you've ever lived in any other cities in Missouri, you may or may not have money. So I'm going to make you do it yourself. Go to show me money dot com or Missouri State Treasurer. You may or may not have money. Lonnie Cox, you had only one dollar. It may not be worth it. I couldn't find any for Landon.
Burber.
Aaron Kroger, Harlan Hatton didn't have any, and Tara Strain, you had a whole buck eighty-five. Now, there is a way to go on there and donate that to one of the twelve that you can donate your money to on your state, like Children's Trust Fund or Veterans, et cetera. And I think everybody else, if I didn't mention your name, you didn't have any. So Phil Hoffman, there was too many Phil Hoffmans on there to tell if it was him or not. So anyway, look your family, your friends, you know, and women, you have maiden names. You have to look up all your names to see if you have money. But I will leave my business card here, but I think a lot of you know how to get ahold of me on my cellphone. James has me on speed dial. Chris, you may or may not have my cellphone. I think you do. Is there anything I can answer? Any questions tonight?
I have one question. What have you heard about them passing legislation of seniors not having to pay?
Yes. I'm all over that.
It's concerned. I mean.
It's been signed into law, and it will go into effect August twenty-eighth, and there's two parts to it. What will happen? Number one, a person has to fit three criteria. They have to be sixty-five or older. They have to be on Social Security, because some people push Social Security off till seventy or whatever age. And number three, they have to live in their own home. Now, whether they have a mortgage or not doesn't matter, but you have to own your own home. But point number one, all of the counties in Missouri, every county commission has to vote to freeze. It doesn't go to zero. It just will freeze it at the current rate and will not increase until that person is no longer in their home, like goes to a retirement home or dies or whatever sells their house. I do not foresee Boone County Commission. They're already he-hawing around. They like high taxes in Boone County. I've never seen a tax they didn't like in Columbia. So they, I will tell you, will not vote to do that. So I personally am taking the mantle to go to step number two. There's a caveat in the law that you take five percent of the people that voted in the last governor election, which was November twenty twenty. In Boone County, ninety-one thousand people voted, roughly. So approximately forty-six hundred people will have to sign a petition, which, because the law doesn't go into effect till August twenty-eighth, I will have these petitions ready to go by September one. And if we get that threshold of about forty-six hundred people in Boone County, I will personally present that to the county commission, and they must, it is not a choice, they must put it on the ballot and let the people vote and let the people of Boone County decide. So that's the route I'm personally taking. I'm not sixty-five yet, but I do live in my own home, and if I don't die, I hope to utilize that when I do turn sixty-five. And it will help my constituents and all elderly on Dexter and Thompson Boone County and throughout the state. So we're going to get a template model. I'm sharing with other reps throughout the state of Missouri, and some of these counties that lean more left than right will be doing the procedure that I plan to do.
Well, good. Thank you for that.
But, you know, it will, it will hurt political subdivisions. I can see schools and other taxing political subdivisions saying, crying foul, oh, we're going to lose money. But the thing is, you're still going to get the money at the point of time it would pass.
Would it?
It's, it's not going to increase. And if you all don't already know, because you'll be getting your tax bills in November, it went up eight percent in twenty twenty-three, and it went up eight percent in twenty twenty-one. And I don't know about you all, but I own a house, and I don't like getting that increased tax bill every other year in Boone County. So anyway, there's nothing I can do about that. I even appealed, my son and I own a home that he lives in. We appealed back in twenty twenty-one because we thought the increase was unjust, and I, it may be past the deadline now, but if anybody wants to try to appeal their new assessed valuation, I would encourage it, but don't anticipate it to change. They're not inclined to.
All I, I don't, I, I want to say is thank you for your service and your term and out, but really appreciate that and hope you consider maybe other avenues of staying involved with the county in some form or thing.
I'm not going away, you know.
You've always been very helpful, so any questions?
I'll be up here at the NRA banquet in a couple of weeks. I think it's next Friday, and I'm in Centroya every week for something or another. So thank you all very much. Call me if you need anything.
Thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
All right. That moves us to item under special presentations. I have a couple of presentation plaques for years of service. We have someone retiring from the fire department. We have someone retiring from the city of Centroya. So first, I would like to present to David Hopick, Fire Department Lieutenant. With appreciation for thirty years, thirty years of service, there's a lot of gratitude and thankfulness we have for people like you and people who serve the community. So thank you very much. And then the other, we'll do is for a lady that's been with us for fifteen years, Ms. Phyllis Brown. Phyllis will miss you, but I know your plants and your fires will keep you busy, and I know you don't like big deals, but I didn't, you got a bunch of people came. So I think that just shows a lot about what people think about you. You have a lot of support in the community. So thanks for your service and what you've done with us for the last fifteen years. All right.
Could I just say my thing?
Sure, absolutely.
I could thank my, thank my family.
After fifteen years, you deserve it. Yeah.
And my friends, Donna and Amy and Nancy Squeezer, and my two friends here, Ms. Maddie and, oh, yeah, your husband. And Ryan. So I appreciate you all coming. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, congratulations to you both again. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. That moves us down to item five, comments from citizens. Does anybody take any comments from citizens? I have had none by email as anyone else.
I would just like to say that Phyllis has been invaluable to the city and to the citizens, and she's going to be very much missed, all her knowledge and expertise and the help that she's provided for the, in the utility billing and assistant clerk as well as cemetery. So thank you so much. We're going to miss you. You're not done yet.
You're here in another two weeks, right?
A week on Friday. A week on Friday.
That's what I'm saying. That's basically two weeks to me.
Yeah.
We'll keep these laws we can. All right. Ms., I have no takers on comments from citizens. I'm going to close item five, which is comments from citizens. That moves us to item six, consent agenda. It can be, it will be approved as a group unless separated by request of one or more aldermen in motion. We have A, Board of Alderman meeting minutes, B, Public Works and Attiliates Committee meeting minutes, C, General Government and Public Safety Committee meeting minutes, D, Collector's Report, E, Treasurer's Report, and F, Activity Reports. Approved the consent agenda as is. The first and second to approve the consent agenda. Goodbye, everybody. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
All in favor? Although the consent agenda passes. That moves us to item seven. Accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars, to the track, for a total of five hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. What were the acts on enterprise cameras? Were that Police Department or somewhere else?
That was set up before I got here.
For cameras for Police Department?
Yeah.
Okay, just for curious. That's what I thought it was. So thanks.
Was that on the follow-up? Is that just one payment or was that the total?
Was that five thousand dollars?
How much was it?
Was that five thousand dollars?
No, it was actually thirteen fifty, so I guess we've been paying.
Yeah.
The MRF, is that, that's insurance?
Correct. Yes, that's our annual payment.
I make a motion to pay the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars in amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Now, first and second to approve the accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a total of five hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. All in favor? Although it passes. That moves us to our action agenda. Number eight, A, bid from Rensel to complete the basin work. That's what we have. So Terry, you were sitting, bring us up to speed. We got, you know, we talked about it.
Matthew did all the work on it, so I'm going to let him talk about it.
So we've been working with several different contractors to get bids. Two of them were very wishy-washy on numbers, not hard numbers. Rensel gave us a pretty hard number that we have kind of dissected a little bit to get the number closer to what we think budget-wise we're okay on. And they timely fashion, probably a little quicker to get to the work that needs to be done so we can get these basins completed. I know Sidney was working with DNR a little bit on some things that we need to turn in from them.
Just to clarify, Matthew, we only received one written bid.
Well, yeah, one written. The other two were verbals, but, but.
With grid area.
Yeah. So Rensel was the only hard paper bid.
This bid's like a page and a half, and that covers everything.
That bid, that bid is the punch list that Bartlet and West.
There are exclusions on here.
Created on that.
Is there any concern with the exclusions for the tracer wire and the suction line connection inspection? Because that's what's on the bid, excluding those.
Yeah, those are, we have ways to complete those ourselves, which there is some other stuff in there that we're, so, yeah, those one items are not needed.
So whatever, I think in the package, right, is it fair to say what we see there that are excluded from their bid is what we kind of spinning down that we could take on ourselves that was our control to do, right?
Yeah.
The action testing on the pipes that are excavated and recompacting, you're only listing one. Is that only one test, or I was thinking it was one per foot of lift?
So they're, they're going to hire a compaction company to be on site as they do the lifts. So that's included. That, their, in their bid, they are going to have a, a company there to do the compaction test as they go all the way up.
Rensel is.
Yes.
But they're just going to get one, or they're going to be?
No, as they go up, one, yeah.
They'll check it as it goes up.
So if that, if that.
Change, it'll be clear to finish great.
Yeah. Yeah. Whatever, whatever Bartlet expects are on compaction.
Okay, they're just.
That's what they're.
Their opinion is a lump sum. That's fine. I just.
No, yeah, that's fine.
I just.
What was the timing of the day? It was, it said it was.
Pretty quick. Initially, it was the third week of July if we move on pretty quick. So could be a little slower than that, but we're.
We're talking this summer.
Oh, absolutely.
I think there's a window of time, the way I understand it, to think and plug us in, kind of plug us in. So.
Probably pretty wet out there, isn't it? Pretty muddy, isn't it?
I don't know.
Need to get out of it.
Are we ready for a motion to approve this, of this thing?
If you want to, just so you know, I will let you know that DNR has already approved the single bid option that was submitted. They've reviewed what we're doing. John Dearhoff, who directs the State Revolving Fund with DNR that oversees this, has approved this. We submitted a letter explaining why we had one bid, you know, firm bid. So instead of going through like a three-bid process, they understand that this was basically the only firm bid we had. So they, they have approved it from that perspective, if the board were to accept that.
Is there any time restraint in this thing like we had before? We had deadlines and deadlines. Are we kind of waiving that, or is there a deadline, or?
I don't think, because we haven't, we haven't done a, a contract yet with Rensel. So, so based upon the board's approval, given that's what takes place, then we will have to work with, I believe, Bartlet and Rensel to come up with a contract that says, the, the fine details are going to be in that.
On the timing of it, not the money part, because that's what we're doing here tonight.
Right.
This is their bid.
Right. This is just, accept their bid so they can.
Now, we're still under the constraint of the DNR's timeline of the finish of the bid.
Right.
We could get an extension at that time, but this will eliminate any concern, I think, if we, if we get these big contracts.
Yeah.
I will let you know, I mean, the lawyer did some math today based on what Tara provided me in conversation. The bid, based on what we have in retainage currently for this project in addition to what we were withholding from a final payment from Fisher, actually would leave us about seven thousand dollars in the positive, meaning we have, again, this is the lawyer doing this, but we, you would have potentially an additional seven thousand dollars of money that you're not spending.
That's like a three percent little room. That's not much.
But I will tell you, the public works and everybody has kind of been over backwards considering inflation and the amount. I mean, I think we, the city's been very fortunate. But I wanted to let the board know that at least with this in place, we shouldn't have to ask for any further funds, or at least based on this, you know, gain the, some other reserve area.
So I will entertain a motion to accept Rensel's bid.
I make a motion to accept Rensel's bid in a total of two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and seven cents and proceed to the contract stage.
Okay. So at this point, I have first and a second to accept the bid. Mr. Magley will abstain.
I will abstain from voting.
Yep. So at this point, you will abstain from voting due to potential conflict of interest. So at this point, we will, before we vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. We will work now, get that contract put together, and work through the details and get the schedule with Rensel. Correct, Matt?
Yep.
Thank you for your.
Matt, when they send that back, given kind of where we've been with this, I definitely want to make sure that I also receive a copy.
Oh, absolutely.
Please.
You mean, Matt, it doesn't work?
Oh, no.
That moves us to item nine. On the finance side of things, pay request number twelve. You want to explain that to us, Tara?
So pay request twelve looks like it's Martin's work on the wastewater side. Correct? No, this is, this is for the water treatment. This is their final pay. So the Martin payment is their final pay. We had discussed.
So initially, initially, there was, you know, you have an initial contract amount, and in the contract, you have a retainage percentage that is applied to the total contract amount. Well, as the project moved forward, there was a change order that increased the contract amount due to additional items. So everybody tracks, Bartlet and West tracks. We have a, a tracking and Martin's tracking, you know, what are we getting paid for, you know, and kind of running down and, you know, getting out of that zero point in the contract. There was initially a slight discrepancy between what we thought was what the city showed versus what Bartlet and West showed versus what Martin showed. And it turns out that the reason there was a difference was because Bartlet and West, like when Martin would submit a pay request to the city, Bartlet and West and Martin were having conversations that the city was not aware that they were having, saying, look, so if Martin were to submit a fifty thousand dollar pay request to Bartlet and West, they would have side conversations, and Bartlet and West may only submit a pay request to the city for like forty-seven thousand dollars. So there would be a three thousand dollar difference. I believe now to this point, and I want to make sure from Tara and Matt's perspective, I think we are in agreement that the figure on this pay request that Martin has submitted matches what the city shows should be paid out. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, you know, through some, no offense, but creative accounting, Martin and the city agree on what is owed to Martin. And if Bartlet and West has something different than.
Other retainage.
Yeah, on the retainage, then.
Finish the job.
Yeah. That's, that's no offense, but at this point, you know, the city and Martin agree and the contract's directly with Martin. So I'm hoping I explained that.
Does that, does that any way affect?
What we're currently at on the litigation? No, I mean, it is possible, like, had there been a discrepancy between what the city thought it needed to pay Martin and what Martin thought it was owed, and Bartlet and West, I mean, all three had different figures, and yes, it would have impacted the litigation. We would not be in a position where I would be advising the board to go ahead and make the final payment on the retainage because that's a disputed item. Here, where the city and Martin agree on what the amount is, they have performed the work. This is not all directly related to the slaver itself. To me, legally from a legal opinion, this does not impact litigation. Their due, their owed.
Yeah. That's why, that's why I was supposed to ask, more that clarified.
Yeah. So I, it would not impact the litigation.
Thank you for that.
So Matt, Martin, we're completely done with Martin, right?
On the water side.
Is everything good? I mean, have we, I mean.
Yeah, absolutely.
The families are gone, everything they did is great. Take it.
Yeah, it's been all, it's been all checked off by DNR. So that's what they, they did with water and wastewater. They do quarterly inspections. They too have punch lists that they come down with, and then they hand it to Bartlet, Bartlet then hands it to Martin. So they are constantly checking that stuff off as they see it, so.
Bartlet, Bartlet's, I mean, not Bartlet, but these guys have done a really good job of wanting to go the extra, try to work with us through problems, issues all through the things, stood up pretty tall.
Yeah. Yeah, it worked.
I would recommend highly, even though we have a problem over there. It's, they're the, you know, they really stood it up, I thought, tall, through the whole thing.
I move that we pay, approve pay request number twelve, I wonder if it says Form twelve for forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents to Martin.
Second. I have a first and a second to approve pay request, Form twelve, of forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Although, pay request passes. That moves us to B, wastewater reimbursement request number fifteen.
So this request is for Martin's work on the wastewater side and what they've done in the past month.
And we feel?
Yeah. Yeah, everything is completed, other than startup, and that's based upon our, our storage at the moment, so.
I move that we approve the wastewater reimbursement request, number fifteen, for Martin's general contractors for sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second. I have first and a second to approve wastewater reimbursement, request number fifteen, labels number fourteen for DNR, a total of sixty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents to Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Although passes. That moves us to item ten, purchasing, purchasing of switchgear.
We talked about this at the committee meetings last week. This is the switchgear that's been ordered to help with.
Out of Jimbo.
Right.
So it's going to be implemented there, plus be for future development.
It's built in.
This was under the, kind of the direction of the MTUA contracted guys that we were, that we've got on site with us. They said that if the city's budget can handle purchasing it, now would be the time to install it.
Feedback last week was the electric budget's plenty healthy for us.
Cool. Okay. Good for motion time. Yes. I make a wish we approved the purchase of the switchgear in amount of forty-eight thousand dollars.
Second.
I have first and a second that we approve of the purchase of the switchgear for forty-eight thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Although passes. That moves us to item eleven, under the mayor, appointments. I will take the appointments of. That moves us to item eleven, under the mayor appointments, I will take, uh, the appointments of, uh, approved as a group unless otherwise separated out from, A, appointment of Beth Cable of Cemetery Saxon, B, Ethan Masser, period, term on industrial development authority, C, appointments, appoint Celestial Angel for a three-year term on Centrae Industrial Development Authority, D, appoint Lori Alden and Gay Martinez to, Martinez to, for a four-year term for City Industrial Development Authority, and E, proclamation for July fourth, proclamation.
And move that we approve the appointments and proclamation as stated?
Second. Uh, first and second, to approve the appointments and proclamations stated under number eleven, A through E, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes. That moves us to twelve, see Mr. Attorney.
All right, so I've got my report in here, um, it's been busy. Um, so I'm on the Boone County Master Plan Committee, and we met in June, and then they also came to town last week, I feel like Centroya had a really good turnout, uh, every meeting had several people in it, and if you look, um, they posted a picture on the Facebook group, if you guys didn't know, there is a, um, a Facebook page for the Boone County Master Plan that you can follow if you'd like, and they're gonna post updates, and when they do their, um, their surveys and all of that, everything's gonna be on that Facebook page and their website and, and all of the places, but Centroya had a really good turnout, and a lot of it, good information was shared there, um, but that is going to be approximately an eighteen-month process that they're working on this master plan. It's been a lot of meetings, and this month has been, been about the same.
You and, uh, next week you and our.
Steph, this week, we will be.
Yeah, this is this week, yeah, yeah.
Marilyn and I will be gone Wednesday through Friday to the Murma Annual Conference, um, Murma does require that at least one person from the city attends, um, or we get knocked on our annual evaluation, so.
It counts, it counts as points, it helps us keep our, our, our status up, it keeps us up.
There's a lot of good information at the conference, I've been, that's good.
Did you have, quite the application for the Assistant City Clerk position?
Yes, we did, yep, Marilyn did a good job going through them and picking out, um, some good candidates for us to interview, and we did, um, find one, and she started Friday.
That leaves us with one part-time position to fill for Stephanie's position.
Right, we are interviewing this week for that, interview today.
Anything else, any questions? Our city minister, I'll close on twelve. That moved to thirteen, our city attorney?
So I mean, just like Tara, it's been a pretty busy month, most of this is obviously covering litigation, so we will discuss that a little bit further in detail in our closed session, um, also I'm working with Tara, I've got some revisions to your all's proposed RV ordinance that we're going to be making some, um, changes to, so you should be able to hopefully have that in front of you next month to vote on and, and get that moved on. So, like I said, most of it has largely been surrounding litigation pieces, and obviously working with Matt and Tara on the Renzel bid and, and DNR and getting that moved forward as well, so, very, it is a busy month.
Any questions for city? I'll close on thirteen, then we'll move to item fourteen, our city clerk.
Um, it has been a busy month, but I feel like saying that every single night, I feel like it's busy.
Well, you gotta look for a larger exit, so you can get all the information here and all, you might not get very many.
Yep, um, the auditors were here the weekend of July before, um, in person, and that was kind of coming up, and a lot going on, but the in-person audit was completed, and they continued to ask me for information, of course, um, that's the reason why I'm on.
Who's your Assistant City Clerk?
Our Assistant City Clerk is Angela Foster, um, she comes to Centroya, they live in Clark, but we had about sixty applicants for the full competition.
Wow.
Um, not so many for the part-time position, um, but yeah, she's off and running.
Yep, but this week she seems very nice, and she seems to be very attentive, really trying to absorb everything, so, particularly for her, I would give it. Beth has been, Beth has been as well, trying to.
Right, um, we're trying to soak up every, every last bit of information we can of knowledge from Phyllis before she departs us, on the twenty-eighth is her last day, so a week from Friday, if you're available, stop in at that last day, and I'll be around.
That'd be nice if you can, I think, that'd be this Friday, the next Friday, we'll be Friday, so, um, what I'll say too is I think you, you guys, you know, city minister and city clerk working together, and, and I think our city clerk especially, uh, managing the team, uh, have done a really good job of looking at, we're making changes in personnel that's starting to happen, uh, looking at, uh, workload, and trying to look at what duties maybe could be, so there's an even spread, and get to a point that we take, somebody takes a vacation, we're, we're able to, to not be exhausted by the end of the week, the others are here, right, so I think that you all did a good job of starting to approve your, and I think that's your answer, so.
Yep, done a lot of reevaluating and, um, reassigning and cross-training continues, that's important.
Absolutely, so I think you all did a really good job, I just want to let you know from my perspective, kind of just wrapped in, looking around while I'm here, so, so you did a good job, so. Well, if that's anything else for our city clerk, Matt will close that, that would move us to item fifteen, uh, a motion to vote to go into closed session if someone would want to.
During the meeting, the Board of Aldermen may elect to go into a closed session and hold a closed vote, and the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, one, as proved for under section six one zero, point zero two one one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, causes of, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, and two, as provided for under section six one zero point zero two one three of the revised statutes of Missouri for hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body.
Second, first and second, all in favor of taking the vote? Okay, vote, vote please.
Uh, Otman Cox?
Or.
Otman Hudson?
Yes.
Otman Becker?
For.
Otman Rogers?
For.
Otman Magley.
No. We're retiring to closed session. We were in closed session, we had a vote to come back to open session, uh, which was voted unanimously, there were no, uh, there were no votes taken on or anything, uh, during closed session, uh, tonight, um, so now that moves us back into, uh, regular session, and as may arise.
We have an ordinance about, uh, people parking on their lawn, lawns and artificially extending their driveways. Uh, I, I thought I remember hearing about that, it's, it's been a few years since it's been up, uh, or brought up, and.
Do you know Harlan, I'll stop you there?
Uh, parking on the grass?
And, and artificially winding their driveways.
They had to get permission through us to do it.
There are, I drove by two on my way here today, two or three, and so I've been seeing a lot more people parking on their grass, um, and I'm not talking just, you know, where Culver might be, or right up on the sidewalk, pulling their driveway and off, and they're parked in front of their front door, I'm seeing it's increasing, is that something we can maybe have Sandy look for and follow up on or something?
What I see is people parking across the sidewalks.
Well, they're definitely not allowed to do that.
That's definitely sort of. We, hey, as we were talking about parking, um, there's a couple of places that I've noticed, and I, I'm in a, you know, I'm in a Volkswagen Atlas which sets up some, but there's a couple of areas that, that you might want to check, uh, where people are parked at a point where you stop, and if you're gonna take a left, you can't see anything. Especially over the other, other part of town, I can get with you and talk about that, but, uh, there's two or three places where it's, it's kind of a blind spot, and the one place is concerning, concerning to a kid on a bicycle, potentially coming up Booth Street, that kind of thing, and I just, it, it creates a, a, a dangerous intersection at that point, you can't see it. Which I, 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 I'm championing there about that, so.
They want their one, they need their district.
But yeah, we can, we can definitely look into that.
Yeah, 'cause it's just, it seems to be increasing where people are more and more going in their driveway and driving across their yard.
Well, when you want to stop.
It's one thing when somebody's got a gathering and maybe there's two extra cars, but we see it every day.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, you know, the time to keep something in order before it gets out of, like, to come within that, you're right, I thought.
Harlan, could you ask Andy to check into that, please?
Well, I was trying to look up the.
Gotcha, I was trying to do the same, but it's not what I thought it was.
So, on Booth Street? My example's not from Booth Street.
Yeah, in Harburg, Harburg, just drive from Booth Street down Harburg to the railroad tracks.
Along Maze Meadows, and then there's one right on Jefferson, and I drove by it right here.
You're saying that they're just making, they're, are they parking on their own property?
Scratch what I said, that was the discussion about the.
Yes, yes, they are parking their own property, but they're literally driving on their, pulling off their driveway and parking in their front yard.
I'm pretty sure there's an ordinance that can't. I mean, if you're doing it competitively or not, not just they've got a bunch of people there.
If, if it was something you saw once, and there were two or three cars there, and the driveway was full, you can understand they were having a graduation party or something, and hey, doesn't happen, no, these are regular.
I think, I think the ordinance reads is that you couldn't just call Bud and that to bring you a little rock and dump it in your drive, front yard, make that a driveway and pull in your front yard all the time, it had to be bordered, it had to look decently, done.
According to.
The city ordinance.
Yeah, and it had to be approved to widen your driveway.
Yes, it had to be approved to widen your driveway.
It's been four or five years and going from memory, yes. Uh, just something I've noticed, I can.
And yours was, uh, Maze Meadows?
There's one on Maze Meadows, and there's one in Harburg, and not Harburg, Jefferson, that I saw just on my road, uh, right here today.
And that one item I would like for the board to consider, we have one intersection around the, um, around the square that's not like the others, and it confuses a lot of people, um, I'd like for you guys to consider making that a four-way stop.
Right up here.
Huh?
Right up here.
Right up, right here.
You can ride up there.
Office.
Yep, that's close office, City Hall. It's not a four-way stop, and it confuses people when you stop there, and then other people will get right up on them, and.
I guarantee I'll forget.
Yeah.
I, I, that's also.
Give me five tickets, the other ones is non-stop signs too, I'll.
I understand, so I just, it'd be nice if we got all four the same around the square, so if you guys are okay with it, then I would talk to Cindy and see what we need to do, do the, I don't know if that's a planning and zoning thing or not, I don't know, but I would look into it if you guys are okay with it, if not, you know, if there's an issue.
I was just gonna say, did, I, this is more of a question for, did you bring up the topic of the parking spaces right here?
No, I've not done that yet.
You're saying.
Hmm? Yeah, there's just a lot of confusion there, people will stop there even though there's no stop sign.
All three of them are stop signs.
Yeah. Stand there and talk to Tara or Matt for half an hour, and you'll see people do it, I mean, it's.
I'll say people. No third stop?
Yeah.
Stop like it's a stop sign, but it's not.
Stand out here fifteen minutes after me, and you'll see him blow through this one over here.
Yeah.
I guess I don't, I just, I don't want to see the nature of the stop sign, but.
What I would like to extend is an application for anyone to come to the police, it'd be awesome.
We can put around the bell.
Like, put a couple things squared here around the bell.
And then Harlan's, uh, request was if we do put a stop sign in there, just put it in angled parking right there for police vehicles.
Not necessarily straight for police vehicles, but we park in the back here, and there's garbage cans, they, the people come to switch the cans, I mean, just, I don't know, those are angled, that matters.
That could be a really good change, I think that would.
And I am glad that you don't care if people park over there to use the community center, because before, people parked over there, and the police department threw a gripe about it, because that's their parking.
Well.
But you can.
And so we'd be talking about doing it on both sides of the street there, from the Capitol as well?
I don't think the street's wide enough.
I don't know, but you've got that, you've got that intersection there of all those, it's.
Yeah.
I don't think, you couldn't do.
I would just leave this side.
Well, this, this, this street is the same width as that street, and they're all angled.
They're all angled.
I like the streets wide enough, but I think because of the parking you have for funerals on that side, it could be a blind spot, so probably this side for sure, I think.
I'd just do this side for now, and we'll look at that other side.
Yeah, that would make sense to me, I think that, that's a good.
And I think you'll probably be able to fit another four, four cars in there, because they're all lengthwise now.
Whatever you do, when you put the damn things in, make them wide enough, you can get a regular car coming there, you can get.
I, I, I mentioned that.
I mean, I don't want to have to get out and hold my breath and. A lot of people aren't real good at just hitting, but.
It's never parking spot, is it?
No, but, I mean, let's not, let's not try and steal six inches from ten spots to give eleven, so, right, that's all.
So we can look at that and have it ready for the next committee meeting for you guys to look at and see if that's what you want to see.
Sure.
Okay.
Whatever you all recommend.
Anything else, as, as may arise?
Do we have a date set for Jerry up here yet?
Our administrative hearing, no, we didn't hear any to talk about that and finalize, we need to get notifications, we'll do that this week.
My grandson's team won.
They're what?
My grandson's team won.
Well, that's good.
It was quite a game, I would say.
And ask him.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna get an update, it's quite a game.
Well, grandpa, you can go see him tomorrow night, did he win all the world run or?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion and adjourn.
Second. No, first and close second, uh, to Jerry, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you stay in the jury.